Ladies and gentlemen, Council President Ms. Newman.
Hello. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
You'll find out.
Lucy?
To our policy agenda, we're postponing item 4A, which is ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for properties identified as 355 and 397 Benaki Avenue and 380 Porter Avenue and 1047 North Park Court.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Brings us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me welcome everybody here today. And even though I think a lot of folks are here to address the zoning issue that has been pulled from the agenda, you're still welcome to make comments here. But Ms. Hunt asked me if she could take a few moments, but before I turn it over to her, I want to thank Dr. Drouddy and the principals and everybody related to -- this is a proud moment, too. I think this brings us up to about 60. Fifty-nine, close enough to 60. That's it. So I want to turn the program over to Ms. Hunt and do something very spectacular in recognition of these accomplishments by the students.
Okay. First of all, welcome everybody here but city council. You know, I always bring you a loaf of bread, right?
Right.
Sherry Bell's got something else for you. Go ahead, Sherry, give it out. Banana bread. And if you don't like the banana bread, Fofo Gillett will take all the extra, okay? So, you got it? I have one extra. I think Barrett doesn't like it because he used to give me bananas. I got some.
Thank you, Barrett.
I got some more. Wanted to make sure. All right, Barrett, you can give me some bananas next time. Thank you. Hey, let me tell you something. I'm an old school principal, former school principal, and I just think it's awesome to see all you parents here. And I do get very emotional because what a proud moment it is for Biloxi Public Schools, but what it is for this community. Because I'm going to introduce to you Dr. Larry Drouddy, who it was his idea to come up with a 30-plus ACT club. So Dr. Drouddy, our interim superintendent.
Thank you, sir. I'm going back.
Susan's a hard act to follow. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for allowing us to bring some of Biloxi's outstanding students here to be recognized. ACT is required by all students in order to graduate from high school now. And for a student to make 30 or above out of a possible 36 being the perfect score is very, very, very difficult. And we presently have 59 students at Biloxi Senior High School that have scored 30 or above on the ACT. I can't take credit for all of that, but I've got a high school principal here named Marcus Budro, and he'll tell you a little bit more, he'll tell you a little bit about our ACT club and how we're doing. And he'll tell you about the new banners. And you need to come out to Biloxi High School so you can see the banners. Tell them, Marcus.
Thank you, Dr. Drouddy. Again, thank the city council. It's our third time coming to bring students to be recognized, and we really appreciate it. We do have new ACT banners. I'd like to give a huge shout-out to Knight Abbey Printing. Knight Abbey printed our first 50 banners for us, and they were hung last Friday. They're approximately almost six-foot banners, which look enormous, but once you put them on a light pole, they're not quite as big. But they recognize the kids. They're all around our campus. So as you drive around Biloxi High School, currently there are approximately 50 banners hanging, recognizing each of these students for their accomplishments. And we'll be adding the last nine once we get those sent over to Knight Abbey. So again, thank you to the Spires for doing that for us. We greatly appreciate it. And without further ado, yes, thank you. Without further ado, we'll introduce our last group of students. We had to add some extras to this one because we had more students that earned the 30 on the ACT. So we have a little larger group than we had last time. We're starting off with Donna Barsagalupia. I'll claim this one. She's mine. Ashton Bidra. Ann Lauren Schmidt. Sean McRight. I might have Sean here.
A little mix-up there.
That's right. No, I'm not going to say you showed up late. He's around here somewhere. I'll find you. We'll get you. Just hold tight for a second, Sean. Michaela Parker. I'm going to switch gears. Hold on. Andrew showed up late, so I'm going to add him in here to you. Andrew Nguyen. Madeline Petrie. And I will say, Madeline's our current high school. Madeline's got a 35 on the ACT. Addie Grace Pyron. We got a little screwed up. We apologize. Ryan Spires. And Ava Wold. Big round of applause to all of them.
Hi, Sherry. Move up.
Thank you.
We have some awards in thanking our pickleball players.
I'm going to ask Tom and Dion to come forth. As you can see by their shirts they're wearing, we've had our annual Guns and Hoses Charity Pickleball Tournament back in October. Their goal was to raise $10,000. Well, they've done that. $10,050. And it all goes back to benefit the police and the fire. I would like, come on, Mr. Hodge also to come forth. He is a presenting sponsor of 1,500 presenting. And we're going to also ask him to give out the checks today with the mayor. The first one is going to go to the Biloxi Police Department. $5,000 for Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics Mississippi. Okay, the second one, $5,000, goes to the Biloxi Fire Department for Bucks for Bikes Christmas Campaign. Mayor, Mr. Hodge. Right, quick. Yep, Mr. Lennenberger. Okay.
Real quick, the firefighters that were supposed to come receive this just finished fighting a structure fire in North Biloxi. So they were unable to come and receive it. But thank y'all very much.
One more thing. Y'all, please give it up for these two people, Ms. Lennenberger. They make my job much easier. I do the logistical part. They're the ones that went out and got the sponsors and got the $10,000 for pickleball and for the police and fire. Thank you.
I don't know if she knew she was on the agenda. Now, but Andy, this is a very special week for a project she's in the middle of. So Andy, tell us about the event.
Well, it is a big week. This has been a year in the making, really, since last November when we took everything out of the contents of the old Magnolia Hotel. We moved it into storage. We've been on the search for a new building, a new location. We finally settled right down the street on Howard Avenue. And the new Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum will open with a grand opening party this Thursday evening. And then the official opening for the museum will be on Tuesday, the 19th. We have hired a new executive director in Tammy Smith, who is right there. There she is. Bravo, Tammy. Tammy will be, you know, she's a very capable worker, person, writer, everything. And we're just delighted to have her with us. And then we have some also, we have some part-time people and some volunteers that are helping as well. So we hope that everyone will, please put it on their calendar to stop by Thursday evening. But I really want to thank the council, every city official, anyone who has done anything to help us get to this point. I really, really appreciate it. And we look forward to seeing you down there where that bright purple awning is down there. You can't miss us on Howard Avenue.
What time is that, Andy?
It starts at 6 o'clock. We have the VIP that the council is invited to at 5 o'clock that we would like for you to be there at 5 for just some recognition. That would be great. So 5 o'clock on Thursday. And then the official, you know, party begins at 6 to 9. There is a charge. It is a donation to the museum of $75. That includes all your food. We've got Blackwater Brass. We've got a really nice event that the council does not pay for that. But we are, we just would love for you to come and show your support for what's been a long time in the making. But thank you very much for all of your support.
Appreciate it. Do one more?
I'm sorry, but he was late. He got in traffic. So Cheryl Blessing is going to check his picture.
And that does conclude my report. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mayor. Any departmental reports today? If not, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
I think it's great to have a group like the Pickleball that do what they do. They create a great organization out there, and they constantly donating money to somebody. So that's great to have somebody that, that, but to get that inclusive into the city of Biloxi. For the Mardi Gras Museum, we hope that Andy and them do a great job. It's another piece of the history of the city of Biloxi, something else that we've got to just keep on going, keep on working at, gets better and better. So that's two good things today. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guines?
Yeah. Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans who are up here. Dr. Tisdale, George, myself. I wanted to get with Walt. I still want to get those, that information about the streets. I need to, an assessment on how far we are and the name of the streets that are undone. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale? Or is Walt coming up?
No, no, just, just some information.
Yeah, they had a nice Veterans Day reception prior to the parade in DeArberville this past Saturday. It's always well-attended, and we appreciate the sacrifices all our veterans have made. Also, the Biloxi Bay Chamber sponsors their annual Biloxi and Made Good, which happens to be the same Thursday as the Mardi Gras Museum opening, although it starts at 5:30. That's going to be at the Visitor Center. It's Tommy Schametta, one of, if I remember correctly, Tommy and Ursula Schametta had six sons. No daughter, six sons. Only had to fold a diaper one way. I'm telling you. Anyway, the tickets are still available for the Biloxi Bay Chamber. If you're interested in going, it's a worthy cause, and he's a good fellow. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, just a shout-out to everything that's happening on the Gulf Coast. Attended ribbon-cutting today with George Lawrence, and I think Dr. Tisdale was there earlier for Lighthouse Pharmaceutical.
Lighthouse.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty good. They're real excited to kind of cut the ribbon today. And we got a lot of exciting things happening, and a lot of energy, as you can see, with Andy and pickleball. And also, I want to kind of recognize Chief Boni. There was a new addition to the fire department that was spotted. Pardon the pun. We got a new Dalmatian dog that's joined our department. I'm hearing a lot of chatter about it. I would like to see if we can go over it. My grandson wants to kind of introduce him to North Bay Elementary. So if we can kind of coordinate that, I'd appreciate it. And there's a lot of fans waiting, waiting over there. And that concludes my report today. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
I have no report.
Okay. We'll move on to the public agenda. Citizen comments. We have 45 minutes allotted. Each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. When you arrive to the desk, please write your name and address down, as well as state it aloud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Okay? Anyone on my right, your left? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm sure you all have not heard, I mean, you have heard about this proposed zoning change on Porter. And I don't imagine for a moment there's not one person in this room that hasn't had a family grow up in that area, or their children play in it, and understand the value of it as it is, as one of the unique, single-family neighborhoods that are in the city here. You know, when we're building out businesses and we're building out casinos, it's very important to what type of feet actually hit the ground. And I'm not saying that this proposal for development is good or bad. But I ask each one of you today, would you put this next to your house? Would you put this next to, on your business corridors? Would you put this next to Howard Avenue, seeing what is happening on Howard Avenue with great development, the new excitement that the city has for its growth? I'm not saying that this is a bad development. I'm just saying it's in the wrong place. There are approximately 10 square miles that meet that zoning over there, and it clearly states and are planning here that, and I don't have the right exact words, that if there are no other land available for this type of zoning, then it can be looked at. There is. And this process went a little backwards, and it's affecting a lot of people. This is our home. We have been through so much since Katrina. And that Porter Avenue Park holds a lot of parents, grandparents, and a lot of new families have come in and started revitalizing the homes. The only thing that has kept that from coming around a little faster is Jerry Creel's ability to handle the problems as they come. And I understand that's getting better. And I appreciate his work. Every one of us does. But at the end of the day, this is our home. This is our city. And this is coming at you. It's been pulled today. We don't know when it's come back. I drove four hours to be here today because I care. And the few people we have here are here because they care today. And I just beg you once again, would you put this in front of your mama's house? Would you put this in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Simsky. I live at 251 Porter Avenue. We started grassroots campaign in order to prevent rezoning of some property on Porter Avenue and Benaki. Excuse me. There is a group of us who spent many weeks going around and getting petition signed against this. And it has not just turned from the rezoning. We just don't want multifamily in our neighborhood whatsoever. Multifamily units just bring nothing but crime. And more, more of that than, than we certainly do need. It seems that the city council, whenever there is something controversial that comes up, tends to kick the ball down the road, down the road, down the road. We've got over 200 signatures, and a lot of these people have shown up here today. Only an hour before this meeting have we been informed that it's been taken off the agenda. So that the person who did actually apply for this can go back and resubmit his request. I feel that our due diligence that we've done to get all of this information together has been used against us to tell Mr. Newman that now he can get his zoning that he wants on Benaki if he just takes Porter Avenue off of it. Here we are once again with the Good Old Boy Network. You know, this, this was a done deal before we walked into the Planning and Zoning Department. I think what y'all are doing is criminal. And if nothing else, it certainly is in bad faith. Councils are made to protect the majority of the citizens. I don't find that y'all are doing that.
Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to come up and speak?
Becky Desport. I agree with the two that were before me. But now I'm speaking truth to power here. It's been said that pride destroys our gratitude and sets up selfishness in its place. And I think that's what we have here today. And we have that today with all the tax credits and grants given by the city to developers, which is more than we get as homeowners. We have built a strong structure called the neighborhood that we are thankful for. Parents and grandparents built it. And we have what money cannot buy. We want it to remain a RS5. All of it. Not just part of it, all of it. The whole thing, whole chabang kaboodle. Biloxi means first people. We must fight for what we have to maintain the firstness that we ask you not only to listen to the majority, but also to hear them. Fofo, you yourself, I don't know where he went, but I listened to him at the graveyard the other day, and he was talking about a new grave plot that he had just found with one of his forefathers, and how proud he was, and that, and, and the pride and the longingness of family was present in your whole being. I was, that really touched me. I just want you to know that. And us sitting here today in this courtroom, every one of us are the posterity of those that have gone before us. And I believe they sit here in the courtrooms today witnessing our decisions that are made to make what matters to so many people matter. Just like our bodies are temples of God, we keep them clean through healthy eating, exercise, and practicing preventive medicine, so are our homes, are our heavens on earth. We take pride in those. They should not be about money. This should be more about what we make. It should be more what we can make through tax credits and grants, which I say is exorbitant. No, this is about making, not making those people mad because it's all about money, which what we were told by a planning commission. It's not about, it's about saving our neighborhoods. It's not about that. I want to leave you with an old Persian proverb, if I got time. So follow me with this. He that knows not and knows not that he knows not is a fool. Shun him. He that knows not and knows that he knows not is a child. Teach him. He that knows and knows not that he knows is asleep. Wake him. He that knows and knows that he knows is wise. Follow him. You each know which one of these you are. Now, we've seen many times where apartments infiltrate single-family dwelling neighborhoods. They change them, and it's not for the better. As for those of us, we know who we are. And we should all be the wise ones who make the right decisions today for the 300-plus of those who are watching and looking for good examples. Those of us who have gone before us and those who are listening today. Thank you.
Well, as you all know, I've been networking since Governor Barber days, top of Hancock Bank for BP cleanup. I'm introducing a new program. Mississippi Development Authority, Mr. Jamie Miller just authorized it, all three counties. Fishing has no boundaries. Paraplegic fishing tournaments for our senior citizens in a disabled community. My Ludwigs and Caretakers Nature Observation, Master Naturalist Program, Mississippi State, and Audubon Society. So I've done this all on my own. And also introducing an education outreach, higher learned education with Hire the Heroes and Spouses, United States Chamber of Commerce, meaning all universities in the state of Mississippi, and meaning Stennis, NASA, and Ingalls, I'm partnering Ingalls I'm partnering up with, for manufacturing opportunity with Red Cross and Lions Club, for global recognition for the hospitality state. I've done this for us. I'm representing Mississippi more appropriately instead of Mississippi burning. I'm here to initiate things with the city as a partnership with the University of Southern Mississippi. For what? Quality of life and blue economy. So here we go, ladies and gentlemen, Restore Council's waiting on me, multiple people are waiting on me internationally. I have the funds, I don't need your money, I need your guidance and assistance. That's what I'm here for, guidance and assistance. I'm looking at developing a water park, and the water park is accessible for wheelchairs. It's in Texas, I want to bring it here, to help our community out for economic development and tourism opportunities. I have all this for us. Internationally, people are coming at me. Y'all should see my Gmail's on my computer, over ten thousand. My phone is blowing up. So here we go. I just met with the focus group, I just met with Chevus Swetman, and I'm meeting with y'all, and I'm going to Restore Council. I have this for us. My name is Gilbert Ramsey. I am what? American Legion, son of a Legionnaire, and I'm American Legion representative, and I'm VFW representative, and we have Veterans Bottle Wording Company initiated, and we're donating housing caskets for the proceeds. We're Mr. Fred Boykin, CEO, President, retired Army Ranger out of Gupport, Mississippi. I have this for all of us, to represent us appropriately. Thank you much for initiative, and Ms. Dixie, you're going to Washington with me. Thank you much for your assistance.
Good afternoon. My name is Maggie Landry, I live at 244 Santini Street, and in regard to the proposed development of the apartment complex on Porter Avenue, I would beg that you decline this idea. I think all of us who live and work on this side of town have tolerated enough with the debacle of a north project roadwork. We've had property destroyed, damaged, and it's just been enough. Now we're about to have a massive traffic overflow when the Kessler Gate moves to the end of Division Street, this is going to impact our neighborhoods enough. The last thing we need is a multi-unit apartment complex in the middle of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to come up and speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Tarrant, I live at 1129 Lafayette Street, which is directly across from the Bolton Building. As Maggie said, our neighborhood has undergone a significant burden over the last, I don't know, six years, I'm done counting, with the construction. I now have a new parking lot in front of my house, which I did not know was coming. Traffic in our neighborhood is horrible, absolutely horrible. I apologize to all of my neighbors because I am constantly on my horn, especially when I go around Circle Park with all of the airmen that are now coming off the base onto Park Circle South and have no idea what a yield sign means. There are going to be many accidents at this intersection, I encourage a temporary stop sign or something, and I'm also opposed to the development that's been proposed on Porter and Benaki. Benaki already has heavy traffic, there are a lot of residents that do live in the housing complex with children that park on the street. I have no idea, two cars cannot pass down Benaki right now, two cars barely pass down Porter as it is with the traffic. It's, it's inconceivable how our neighborhood got to this point with the great history of Biloxi, the great pride that we take in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is coming up, there are a lot of people doing renovations, myself included. We've owned our house since 2002, where we had purchased it from my husband's aunt, who lived there for, for many years, many, many years. A lot of the people in our neighborhood are well-established, they're very active members of this community, and we're just, we're, we're tired, we're, we're tired. I mean, driving down constant potholes, streets that somehow are legal but amazingly six to eight inches less in width than they were prior to the construction. It's just, it's miserable, it's absolutely miserable living in, in our area right now. Thousands of people coming in and out, it's not safe for our kids to play, my kids can't even ride their bikes, they haven't been able to ride their bike really at all. I just really ask that you really carefully consider the proposals that are coming forward. Our neighborhood could be so great. It was really, really great when, when we moved in, and I just ask that you really try and preserve one of the few single-family residential areas that are on our side of town. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Misty Broussard. I'm the, this is, you're looking at three generations right here, the old Belvedere off Porter Avenue, Frank Picorso Street. I support what the ladies and the gentlemen before me have said regarding that entire development, because I can't let my child go to the trash can without, without worrying or watching him. The riffraff on our roads is, if, I'm, let me start over real fast about, I'm the late, I mean, my grandfather is the late CJ and Shirley Landry, or my grandparents, I know they're rolling over in their grave. The, the street cons walking around, I filed four reports just Friday night alone from my house, in less than point eight miles to McDonald's and back, of incidents where people are exposing themselves. My neighbors' grandchildren are witnessing the same things in the front yard on a Sunday morning at ten o'clock, because there's two halfway houses apparently that we were not notified of, nor were we, you know, did we approve it. We put our trust in you guys, you know? Our voices are what should matter over politics, development, or anything else. I don't even feel safe in a place that I've called home, you know? You guys have got to do something about it. Biloxi is going to be a ghost town. We can't turn, you know, our eyes to these things and things be swept under the rug. If you guys were still living, Mayor, if you were still living right there, you would see, you've got to open your eyes, please. I, I called the police because there was three of these halfway house children, I guess you could call them, running through your aunt's front yard, they were almost on her porch. You know, we still have a lot of elderly left in our neighborhood. I will do my best to protect myself and my child and my neighborhood and the people on my road, and thank God we have, you know, we're like that on our street and all of us in our neighborhood, but what about the eighty-eight-year-olds and the ninety-year-olds? We've had our vehicles broken into, there was twelve incidents in one weekend? Something has to be done, or... I just hope you guys really listen to all these, these are the fine, these are the Biloxians right here. I never thought in a million years that I would not feel safe in this town, and I don't, and I, and I am a strong woman, you know, I don't scare easily, but I don't feel safe here anymore. We need to help our people, not house people that are younger than me that can walk twenty miles a day. I see people getting dropped off on Corvette Street like it's a bus stop, and they're to go to Mercy Cross. Why weren't we informed that Mercy Cross Crusader Drive is now home, is the home for every street con that they're coming in from?
I'm sorry ma'am, your time is up.
We should have known that.
Hello, I'm Artie Desport. I've lived sixty-seven years in this neighborhood. I remember back in the days when Fofa used to come to the house, we could play in the streets, you didn't have to lock your doors at night, nobody broke into your vehicles, but since then, West End Homes has really made the crime rate go up really bad. We've got people walking up and down the streets at night, thugs looking at what they're going to steal for the next, that night. Besides that, you go up the street to, to Judge Seacool, we've got prostitutes, we've got child molesters, we've got drug dealers, we've got drug addicts, we've got thugs walking over, and now we got homeless everywhere. And I'm not against homeless people, but most of them are drunks, I'm sorry, you know, I didn't make them that way, they decided to be that way. I'm against this rezoning because we don't need any more of this in our neighborhoods. You're overrun the place, and everybody has moved out, and y'all got fine big yards and gated communities, but we're still there, and a lot of the elderly people that's grown up in that neighborhood is still there, and we don't like it, we're, they have, they're not safe anymore, they don't want their kids to go outside after dark, they've had their bicycles, their, their lawnmowers, their car is broken in, Mr. Bonney had a shed, all of his tools ripped out. I mean, when's it going to stop? The police can't seem to keep up with them, so you want to move more of them into the neighborhood? I mean, is this what you want to do? I mean, I'm sorry, but I don't, I'm not for it, I'm against it, and I'll do whatever. Me and my wife has walked from Hopkins Street to the beach, all the way to the end of Kensington, and got names, I've talked to so many people that has been robbed in the last few months from these thugs walking up and down our streets at night. Now, y'all supposed to be taking care of our city, start taking care of it, do something about it, don't let this go through. That's all I've got to say.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Lois Reedy, I live at 1091 Columbus Street in Biloxi. I moved to Biloxi in 1997 from Albuquerque, New Mexico. Since that time, I've lived only on Howard Avenue, Santini, and now Columbus Street. I don't intend to move to Ocean Springs or anywhere else, I'm going to stay in downtown Biloxi. I'm a Realtor, I've been selling real estate for eleven and a half years in Biloxi. There's actually four Realtors here that I know of that live in our neighborhood. So I'm going to speak to you, Columbus is a short little street, and some of the women have spoke about it, there are some very, I'm speaking for my neighbors, two at least elderly women that are right in my short little block, that were really unable to come today, but they've lived in their homes misses, at least for fifty, fifty-five years. I am very much against this proposal, I find it highly suspect, suspect that at the last minute this was pulled from the agenda, when we've all been working tirelessly on this. As a Realtor, I will state, I, I heard Mr. Newman's proposal at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I, as a professional, absolutely disagree with his premise of stating that they were going to build these apartments, and they were going to have Kessler people in, and teachers and things like that. I'll tell you as a Realtor, that I could not, I won't be able to sell, I've sold many houses in my neighborhood, I will not be able to do that if you all allow this to happen. And I'm sure the other Realtors here will agree, and many of us wouldn't have even bought a house in this neighborhood if we had even suspected that you might change the character of our neighborhood and put a hundred more apartments in there. I personally don't care what they do on Benaki, but I certainly care what happens on Porter Avenue. There is no reason for this, if they want to make money, they can build beautiful homes, but we are absolutely against this, and you're not going to, we're not going to stop. We're going to be calling all of our councilmen, I've, I've known George Lawrence for years. We're not going to stop, and when you, we get notice that it's back on, we'll be here, hopefully it'll be warmer, and there'll be a lot more people here. Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Bellas, I live at 422 Porter Avenue and have lived there for thirty years. Born and raised on Back Bay, very proud of it. I recently retired and gotten to know a lot more of my, my neighbors. Good people, diversified group of people. We've got older people, we've got middle-aged people, we've got young people. We all take care of each other, we're a real neighborhood. And I have heard from some of those folks that if this happens, then this is not what they bargained for, and they may pull out. And that is a scary situation. I want you to stop and think. Our friends, neighbors, relatives in East Biloxi, they all had a great neighborhood. They were a bunch, group of people that held together, they had a great togetherness. Katrina took them out, that was a natural disaster. This is not a natural disaster, this can burn our neighborhood, this can stop what we've got going. I've watched people in my neighborhood build, renovate, and they're doing it with their hands. They're not hiring people to do it, I have seen, I'm the Gladys Kravitz of our neighborhood, I watch them, and they are doing it theirselves, and they're doing a fine job. And I hate, I hate to see that turn into nothing, and these folks move out. So please consider us, we're not a natural disaster, this can be helped, and if you'll do that for us, we would sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, y'all. Let's talk about the physical aspects of this. That area in the circle is very small, and you're going to put up a hundred-unit apartment building. Where is the two hundred-car parking place going to go? You're going to completely disseminate that area, there's just not room enough for a hundred units and a two hundred-car parking lot. It's just not going to work. A genius doesn't have to figure that out. The traffic will be terrible, the property values will go down, and we all have a great deal of pride in our homes. It's a residential area, residential meaning, single homes, not apartment buildings. That's all I've got to say.
Sir, I need... Sir, can we get your... Sir, can you state your name out loud for the record, please?
Gerald Vertucci.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Okay, I would just, yes, sir.
My name is Mike Malz, and I reside at SEAL in Division. And I think this is a very negligent move to allow that project to go in. One, I felt the city was negligent in allowing Oscar Renza to vandalize and damage my property with no resolve, compensation. Now I'm on the forced buyout for Kessler on a home that's no mortgage, no taxes. I'm doing everything to relocate my home in that same area and neighborhood because we've been there a long time. I have three children under the age of seven, and the only park that offers things to do for my children of those ages is that Circle Park there on Porter Avenue. There's other parks in the area, but they don't offer what I can take all three children to, seven, four, and one. The traffic already now, from being rerouted off of Forest, is dangerous right there for the kids. Oh, you put that complex in there and it increases the traffic as it is, look at the, the speeders going down Division now. It's amazing the difference of the traffic right there. My kids like to play ball in the front yard, you know? So I think you should really reconsider that. So I think you should really reconsider that, there is other land there, have a move up on Benaki, there's all kinds of land there, but leave that park area alone.
Anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Sure.
Yeah, my name's, uh, Mike Forrester, I'm actually the new guy here, I've only been here two years. I married into an old Biloxi family name, but I don't name drop, so the only name you need to remember is Michael Forrester. Cause I will be here and I will show up every time. I'm more worried about the traffic and what about services? We've already had the roads tore up for a couple of years now here. Is we have large enough services out there to support this complex? I mean, we're just gonna get back into another construction phase? We're gonna have all construction equipment running down our roads with the new gate traffic being directed through there too? So we're talking about another, what, one, two years? I don't think we've already been through enough of that. And then, I have four grandchildren myself, and I got two grandsons, I take fishing on Porter Street Pier and Forest Street Pier. I can't even go do that now, we used, we like to walk down there. Walk, in a small residential neighborhood. That's the way we'd like to keep it. We are your constituents here, we would like it if you would listen to us, take our advice, really listen and remember what it was and back in the time, cause I've been told the stories about old Biloxi, about what it meant to be having and living in a neighborhood, to know your neighbors, to respect them, to show them what it was like to be neighborly. That's what we wanna keep it in our neighborhood, it's our neighborhood, who we're willing to share it with, other people, who wanna be right and act right and join our community. That's what this is about, community. We all want to be together, move ahead in this world, and do what we have to do to raise our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, whatever the case may be. So, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? I just want everyone to know, everyone seems to be looking at me during their comments because we have the same last name, but however, I have absolutely nothing to do with them or their project, and we all found out at the last minute that because the applicant themselves removed this item from the agenda, so we don't know exactly how long that's gonna be. However, when it does come up, I will have to abstain because we do have the same last name. They are somewhat family, but I do not have absolutely anything to do with this project and I do feel for you. We'll move on to the policy agenda. A was removed, so we'll move on to B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for property identified as 280 Ru Pettyboy.
Do you have a motion? No. Previously moved by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Glavin, any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, the, the comment on this piece of property, it's almost in the middle of an apartment complex and it was, uh, presented to the planning... It was presented to the Planning Commission, uh, more or less as an anomaly, there was nobody who objected to that, and the, uh, the structure itself, I believe, is, looks like a fourplex, that be true, a duplex? Might wanna give us a little history on this, Jerry, you're more familiar with it than I am.
This is the structure. And, and, you know, as zoning changes go, you know, there are three reasons, there are three reasons that zoning change should be approved or denied, a public need, a change in the character of the neighborhood, or a mistake in the original zoning, this is a mistake in the original zoning. This building was built commercial, has been used for commercial, and because it was so close to the apartment complex, it actually got included in with the zoning for the apartment complex when we were redoing the land development ordinance in 2009. So what we're doing is just correcting that, bringing it to the agenda.
Right, thank you, Mr. Crell. I don't have anything to add to that other than I've, uh, there was nobody speaking in opposition, nobody's contacted me, I don't have a problem with this at all, thank you.
Mr. Glavin?
I don't have anything to add that the good doctors already explained.
The good doctor, right.
Talking to me?
Talking to you.
Anyone else?
Be that as it may.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote with Barrett out of the room? Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Glavin, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
The only thought I'd have is, I'm sure the, the clerks and the administration, I'm sure, have looked at the, the council meeting schedule for next year. Typically, we meet on the first, third, and fourth Tuesday of the month, in December, that would be the first, third, and fifth meeting, excuse me, first, third, and fifth Tuesday. And, uh, I'm sorry, in November. No, that'd be December, the first, the 15th, and the 29th, rather than the first, the third, and the fourth meeting. And, uh, that's all my guess, it's just because people are traveling the whole nine yards. I don't know if this jams up the administration on any kind of accounts payable or docket work or anything, but they're, they don't appear interested, so we'll keep rolling, that's all, just a thought, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Nothing, Mr. Demme? Okay, Mr. Guy? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, and there's, uh, there's H, the First Amendment to Master Service Agreement, what are we doing, Michael Baker here? What is that?
So we're asking under consent agenda items FGH, and I believe I, for our various design firms to accept an amendment to their previous master service agreement. What this will require is that these design firms are, uh, they're required to enter into mediation, non-biding mediation, if we have issues during our construction projects that are related to, say, a contractor and a utility firm or some other issue, we're trying to get everybody to come to a table and have a discussion so we're not drawn out into a lengthy court, uh, battle, hopefully. So it's, it's, uh, it's merely that.
All right, thank you. On K, I know we have an additional 600,000 coming for the gate, is the 5 million already hit too? I know they ordered...
22 million currently, this is getting another 600,000. In order to...
I mean, the, the original was 5 million plus 600,000, right?
Right, it was 5 million plus another 200,000.
Do we, we have all of that in hand?
No.
Okay.
So we submit quarterly invoices to be reimbursed on that grant.
So you draw from the 7.2 million? Have we had any power with that, no hangup to that thing?
Nope, nope, they pay right on, as soon as we submit our invoices. That's different from the Kessler Gate outside where we actually have the money in the bank, a different grant requirement. They're all, seem to be different.
And on N, this 350,000 from the Tylands, the original 350, or this is another 350?
That's 350,000 that we requested and it, and was given to us in, in the last round of Tylands money. We, we just have to go through the formal process of asking for it.
So that's all we receive?
We'll have that in time to make the, uh, to, we'll be advertising the West Biloxi Boardwalk project very shortly.
Did we apply for anything else from Tylands, or this is, this is it?
We had, to my recollection, there were six projects that we applied for, uh, for Tylands, one, one of which has been given to us on, under Gomesa, which was the Bayview Boardwalk. On the West Biloxi Boardwalk, we asked for a little more than 2, 350, but that's how much we got, 350. We asked for, uh, cleaning up the, uh, the bayou, Keegan's Bayou, did not get, get that award, but it's still in the, you know, pecking order for another year. We asked for money for the, uh, we asked for money for the, for the Point Cadet Harbor, we didn't get it from Tylands, but we are getting it from BP, Restore Act money.
Say again. All right, that's good, uh, the, the Keegan's Bayou thing is a big thing, I mean, are we gonna get money to clean it up, that's, I mean, that's gotta be drained and cleaned.
Yeah, this is the third year we've submitted that project to Tylands, hasn't been funded yet, but it's working its way up the, up the list.
As Mike mentioned, and you know, the Gomesa is a, is a big opportunity, I think, as well as the Restoration Act, Restore Act in, in Tylands, so we're pitching all of them.
Well, I know, our drainage system pretty much runs to, through Keegan's Bayou and it's, until you clean it out and get it deeper, the coves are sitting in the water, so it's gotta be dropped about four or five feet to do any good.
All those folks that impact, you know, leverage and so forth on those things are aware of what needs to be done as far as what we're asking to do with, you know, that whole project, taking it from, you know, Division Street all the way to, uh, you know, to Goat Island.
All right, thank you. That's it.
The first case on the agenda, Louise H. Anderson Estate, 375 Nelson Road, that case has been resolved. Second item, Ralph L. and Mavis G. Dickerson, 157 Brady Drive, the property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ralph L. Mavis G. Dickerson at 157 Brady Drive? If not, this case is closed.
Item C on the agenda, Extended Stay LLC, 590 Beach Boulevard, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Extended Stay LLC at 590 Beach Boulevard? If not, this case is closed.
Item D, Petacola Shore Investment LLC, 1712 Beach Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item E, Gertrude Francis Cecilia Woodard, 627 Cop Street, um, this property has subsequently been sold or, or been quick claimed deed over to someone else, so we're gonna have to remove it and bring it back with a new owner.
Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Guines. Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll make that second.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Walter, again, we get more money coming in down the line.
Anything else? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Now do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to remove item E from code enforcement? Motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor? Unanimous vote? Now do I have a motion for the council to go in a closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go to executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Six one. Now do I have a motion that the council reconvene as an open meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Six one. Now do I have a, uh, motion for the resolution that the council do go in executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Six one. We'll be right back. For the purpose of potential litigation related to the Bonnie Carey spillway and transaction of business and discussion regarding location of a business and industry and prospect sale of lease of lands.